All right. Good evening, everyone. And we'll call to order another meeting of the Menhasset Board of Education. Thank you all for coming tonight. We will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll get going with one of the best parts of the job, which is student recognition. So always excited to see so many of our talented and fabulous students get recognized for all of these fabulous accomplishments. So let's get going. And I think, Dr. Pelletary, we're starting with our 2025 Capstone diplomas.
Yes, Margaret, you're gonna jump in?
Margaret, you want to jump in? Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Hit the button and a green light.
Thank you. Good evening. We're here once again to recognize our students for the AP Capstone program. I'm going to invite two of the teachers who are integral part of the program, Mr. Jeremy Berman, who teaches our AP seminar. Come on up, Mr. Berman. And Mr. Elliot Wong, who teaches our AP Research. So you have a very consistent program. We do really well every year. Mr. Berman's been teaching AP Seminar for eight years. Mr. Wong has been teaching AP Research for seven years. And each year, we've had 100% passing rate on both exams. And it's due to the work of Mr. Wong and Mr. Berman. So please give him another round of applause. So very quickly, the AP Capstone program is something that was started by AP College Board. They wanted to give students the opportunity to do research. Mr. Wong and Mr. Berman are going to go into more detail for both of the courses. But these are student-based research projects. They pick the topics. They have an opportunity to have two experts work with them to make sure that they understand the rules. And then these are submitted to AP College Board, and they are graded by AP College Board.
Good evening, everybody. So when we're talking about AP Seminar, you know, students learn to work collaboratively and independently to investigate a problem or an issue, analyze arguments and synthesize information from multiple sources, compare different perspectives, enhance reading, writing, and speaking skills, and to work both independently and in groups to do multimedia presentations, work on public speaking skills. I've said this to the board before. I've been given no greater gift. I've done nothing more rewarding with my career than having the opportunity to teach this class. What's really special about it, and I say this to students every year, the only limits are the limits of your own imagination. Students have the opportunity to take ownership and do projects on things that they're passionate about and really set a course of study for themselves. The students being honored tonight covered everything from steroids and sports, mental health of high school, college, and professional athletes, criminal justice, reform, Native American rights. So the variety of topics, you know, is just extraordinary. It speaks to the creativity and the empathy of the students and the extraordinary level of academic freedom that we get in Menhasset. I thank the board deeply, you know, for always standing up for that. And of course, I get to work with he's very modest, but I get to work with the most creative and the kindest gentleman I've ever had the pleasure to meet, Mr. Wong, who's really the heart and soul of the Social Studies Department. So it's a labor of love. We're a family. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wong to talk a little bit about the second year of the program.
Thank you. You think nurses burn out at a pretty high rate? They get disillusioned with their job, especially in the post-COVID era?
Yeah, right.
You think it's okay for somebody to pose with like a Bengal tiger? Or, you know, climb the statute and take selfies on top of that? Or do you think it just encourages more copycat, possibly criminal behavior? Do you think it matters if on a tip screen it says $1, $2, $3, or 10%, 20%, 30%? It's pretty good, right? You know? Not me. Not me. Do you think high first-round draft picks get more chances to wash out of the league than sixth, seventh, eighth-round, you know, wonder kids? And man, if I could do it, I would totally talk in the vocabulary of the kids because there probably is some language code-switching going on between younger and older kids, right? These are the papers represented by the students who are in the room with us tonight. I did nothing to tell them what to do. They came to me with an idea. And I see my job as to say yes. How can we get this kernel of an idea to something that we can do together? And it was a wonderful, wonderful experience to work with these students. It is extremely intensive, both from their point of view, but also the resources that are taken up by the district, you know, cooperation from fellow teachers, from students, parents. Those of you who ever received a survey or a link to a survey from one of my students will know what that's about. It's been my pleasure and honor to have done some kind of research work in this district for like, I don't know, 28 or 29 years. But the freedom to explore ideas, working in AP Research, has really been rewarding. I think that's the best way to say it. And it's been rewarding for me to build these relationships with kids as I support their curiosity and your initiative. You guys did a great job. And it's been fun working AP Capstone. Thank you.
So tonight, we're going to recognize students for two different certificates and diplomas. The AP Capstone program, as you can see on the board, the students have to complete AP Seminar, then AP Research. And they have to also do four additional AP exams and be successful on those exams. And they will earn an AP Seminar and Research Certificate. If they do the two programs, if they also pass the four AP exams, they get an AP Capstone diploma. So tonight, we're recognizing both. Okay, so these are the students this year that earned the AP Capstone diploma. Jason Chan. Okay, thank you.
Olivia Levea.
Congratulations. He gets to shake his hand, too.
Rachel Meyer. Ishan Mihal. Gabriela Sorio. Evangelina Vasis.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
And Hudson Yang.
Hudson Yang.
Mr. Berman, we're not done. Come on back, Mr. Berman. Oh, we have more.
Oh, wait, there's more.
There's more. These are the AP Seminar and Research Certificate winners. Madison Chen. Teresa Harvey. Victoria Wang. And Gwenneth Wong. Okay. All right, let's go. Sure. That's just kind of big. So those were the students who were juniors last year. We do want to also recognize the students that graduated or are in college now. So we don't know if any of their parents came. They were listed in the board minutes. So I just wanted to make sure we recognize them. Mr. Berman wants to name some of the names.
So we are happy to recognize Liliana Sarah, Bryant Bo, William Conkling, Alyssa Kaparalis, Christina Lago, Hobi Lu, Christina Pryhuber, Emma Theophilatos, Arini Savelas, and Shannon Wong.
Congratulations.
So I earned my doctorate from St. John's University in 2018. And several other folks here have their doctorate as well. The level of work that our kids are doing in research, in writing, in hypothesizing, it's pretty incredible. When I look at the work that they do compared to the work I was doing getting my doctorate, there are incredible similarities to the level of work and what they do on the high school level. So I'm really impressed with the work that you've done here. Thank you all. And the work that our kids are doing, it really is a testament to the programs that have been created here in this district, K through 12. So thank you so much.
All right, I will echo those sentiments. I mean, this type of investigation and discovery, I think it goes to the core of what we're trying to do here. It's fabulous to hear you speak about these programs and these students. And keep going, please, keep going. And if you need things from us as a board in terms of resources, please ask, because it's fabulous stuff. So anyone else? Okay. So with that, I trust you do not want to stay, all you wonderful families, for the rest of this meeting. So now you can excuse yourselves. Please stay if you want to. I'm not trying to discourage, but I know you want to get home to your families and your studies.
Have an outstanding data presentation.
Yeah.
For about an hour. I'm kidding. Kidding.
All right. Moving right along. So first things first is approval of the minutes from our prior meeting. So do I have a motion? Second, all in favor? All right, that's 5-0. And we're going right into our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Post. First thing I want to do is recognize that we have our student board representative here tonight, Catherine Abrams. Catherine, welcome. I've met Catherine. And I understand and recognize she will be running the district in the near future, I'm sure. So Catherine will have an opportunity to speak to the community as well in terms of a student report. But, you know, New York State this past year passed a regulation that required all districts to have student board members. And this district, I'm proud to say, has had a student board member for many years. So others will start to see the benefit of having kids weigh in. On the reason we're here, and I think it's great that they're at board meetings because when you need to look around, say, why are we here? And what are we doing it for? Here's a student member right here. So Catherine, again, thank you and welcome. First thing I wanted to talk about in my superintendent's report beyond Catherine was the news of this past week that Menhasset schools, amongst others on Long Island, received a notification over this past summer that they were going to earn, or they had earned the prestigious National Blue Ribbon Award. And we were told that we had to hold on to that information because it wasn't ready for public consumption until the near future. And those names should be announced to schools and other national schools. Winners of that award would be announced in late September, early October. And then we received an email from New York State Education Department saying the awards had been canceled by the federal government. We weren't going to have them this year, which, as you might imagine, was terribly disappointing for a great many people across this nation, and especially in schools. That had, this is not just, it happens by accident. There's a lot of work that goes into that application. So we were certainly disappointed to have it be told we earned that award and then have it kind of yanked out from under us. We earned the award at Muncie Park as well many years ago and at the secondary school back in 2019, I believe, 2018, 2019. So for a second time, the high school, the secondary school, not the high school, the secondary school earned that award. Unfortunately, that is still the case. The federal government is not moving forward with the program. But New York State has stepped in and said that they will do something to recognize the schools at a Regents meeting coming, going forward. And perhaps we'll be sending people to something in the future to accept that award. But I think it's important, this community and these schools. And again, everyone, as I spoke to our leadership team, everyone K to 12 is a part of that. And the work that they do in the early grades builds that foundation that is supported and carried on and moved forward by the secondary schools. So I want to thank all the people that were involved in that. And again, congratulate this community around something so prestigious as that. Secondly, I will admit that I underestimated, I think myself and many superintendents underestimated the abilities that our kids have when it comes to resiliency. And the reason I raise that is the new cell phone policy, this distraction-free, distraction-free school. Boy, I'm really distracted right now by this, whatever noise that's making. It might be me, James, right, fiddling with it? Okay, I'm gonna put it on. See, the problem, I'm not supposed to bend it, but it's a little bit higher than, I'm good now? Our kids and the cell phone policy, I mean, we just are moving forward. I was concerned, many of the superintendents, we were terribly vexed this summer, wringing our hand, like, what is going to happen? What are we going to do? There's going to be an uprising. Kids are going to be, the teachers, the parents, the kids. And we are just moving forward. We're just doing our business and going to class. And yes, I hear, I see the kids on their phones, the 11th and 12th graders, when they're going out to lunch. And that's fine, as they head outside. That's natural. But in the course of the school day, this has not become what I thought and many others feared it would become. And again, that is, credit should go to our students and our youngsters and their parents in terms of conversations I'm sure they had regarding this policy. And I'm just very pleased that it has not been a bone of contention or an issue for our folks pretty much whatsoever. Maybe Catherine, I'll ask you to feed into that a little bit. Maybe you'll have a completely different story than I am. Kids are pulling their hair out in school and things like that. But I've been in the buildings, and I haven't seen that. So I want to give credit where credit is due, to the staff and to the students as well for working through that. School summer construction is coming to an end. Our beautiful auditoriums at Shelter Rock and at the secondary school are being finalized. We are still hopeful for end of October, for those areas to be completed. Fingers crossed on those. But we are working through punch lists now. We have our new bathrooms, our new tennis courts, our new parking areas. There is an issue over at Shelter Rock. The speed bumps are a little bit too tall. And you don't know what superintendents do. I actually went over there and measured with a measuring tape. And Margaret, you were there. And you helped me by placing a folder across the bump. And people are like, look at this guy. The superintendent is out here measuring. But this is the job that you need to do. You need to do everything. And so we found that the bumps were four and a half inches. And they should be standard three and a half inches. So we said, we, folks, we got to go back and fix that. Because I know someone's grandma lost a hubcap today over there, going over, yeah. And it is, look, I have a pickup truck, and it bounces like crazy going over those bumps. So they are going to rectify that. But anyway, so much work was done over the summer. It's coming to an end. We're doing those punch lists and things and making sure that our facilities are fantastic for our students for now and moving forward. Student parking, I know, is an issue. That seems to have settled down somewhat, which I appreciate the patience of everyone. We instituted a lottery system this year. And that seems to have worked well with our senior students. We are looking to put more parking in the back. We have some, we have three containers in the back parking area. We're looking to move some of those out so that we can put more parking there. We'd swing our staff to the back there and then have students continue to park along the fence where they park now, so that would help alleviate some of that. So it's something we've heard from the community, and we are working through it and continuing. And then today, Gerard introduced me to one of the members of our Tower Foundation, who brought a check for us today, a sizable check, to help pay for the displays that we put in the, I believe it was in the high schools, in the high school, in the secondary school, monitors, so we don't have posters everywhere. And I see those monitors are fantastic. A great deal of information goes out to our students and staff. And we have the Tower Foundation to thank for that. So I just wanted to publicly mention that. I met Ms. Sublonis today and very happy for them. And thank you for supporting us and our students. That concludes my superintendent's remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments from the board? Great to hear on the cell phones. Fabulous. Let's see. Keep going. Keep going. All right, so next, Catherine, and welcome from the board as well. Happy to have you, excited for you to be here. And you're up with your first student delegates' report.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Catherine Abrams. I'm a senior. It's an incredible honor to be here and just be able to share on behalf of the student body. This is amazing that we're able to have student voice be represented amongst the schools. Thank you. So for the student body report, I come from the Student Senate, which, if you don't know, is basically just a collection of members from each club in the school, me in the school every once, one Thursday a month. And they discuss school-wide issues or just club events and personal things that are important to their club and school overall. So the president of the Student Senate is Thomas Greigle, and he's doing an amazing job. And both Thomas and I are going to be on the upcoming AI Town Hall Committee, which is going to be an event held by the town hall. And I'm pretty sure Dr. Chowsky will be there as well, Dr. Pelletary. And we will be discussing the importance of AI in school and just regulation and upcoming policies that may be implemented in order to control this very relevant up-and-coming issue. Thomas Greigle and Junior Tiana Pan are on the Shared Decision-Making Committee, which should be good. And overall, things are running quite smoothly in the school. You mentioned earlier the cell phone policy might be an issue. Honestly, the same thoughts you had earlier about an uprising. Everyone thought the same over the summer. You know, like, we're not going to take this. It's not going to be good. But it's really, I'm surprised. It's not as bad as one would think. Most kids are just upset about MacBooks and, you know, the personal devices. But we recognize that that's an issue more of the school Wi-Fi and the network. So that's understandable. But kids are working diligently. I think the fact that we didn't always have MacBooks or phones prior, or especially a lot of kids in the middle school coming straight from elementary school, where obviously phone usage is very limited, it's not that big of a shift. You just keep your phone in your locker, some kids in their backpacks, and it's not that big of an issue. However, a lot of kids are saying that, you know, during their lunch or their free period or in the hallways, it'd be a little more convenient to have their phones out. But we recognize if this is, you can't make any exceptions at all. It's either all or nothing, and it is what it is. But overall, things are running quite smoothly in the school. And I hope it continues to do so.
Well said, thank you. That may have been one of the best student reports we've ever had.
I'm going to give Catherine my reports. You do mine, all right, before you do yours.
So well done. And we look forward to more from you. So next up, yes, data-wide, district-wide, I'm sorry, data presentation.
Dr. Chowsky, please jump in. I know you have a team here tonight. Thank you.
How are you doing, James? So thank you so much to the board for the opportunity to share Menhasset's strong results with you and with the public. This evening, Ryan Alapurti and I will be presenting an overview of last year's data. And our directors and supervisors, Ms. Tallerini, Mrs. Ronai, Mr. O'Connell, Ms. Lang, and Mr. McGowan are here as well. They are, you're going to hear their voices very clearly in this presentation. We heard you. This is very concise within that. But they are also here for additional questions should you want to ask more. Before we start, I wanted to be very clear about one point. I want to underscore this notion that within every data point are children. And it's very important to know that we use data as a tripwire, as a check and balance to ensure that we're paying attention to trends that require attention and adjustment. And we're really careful when we do that. It's really easy to focus on the simple data and grades or only on the individual complexities that make children unique. But what we do is we work, that both are important, and we work very hard to make sure that we're growing individuals and the system. growing individuals and the system as a whole. It requires constant review and a whatever it takes attitude from our entire staff to make sure we're addressing every child every day. So to underscore this idea, what we're doing in between each one of the disciplines, we're gonna be sharing data that points to this notion of the whole child. So this one, this photo is a photo of our middle school junior athletes. Students had just won third out of 20 teams at last year's March Kellenberg Middle School Math Tournament. So, first of all, I want, also, I need you to know that the cut scores for 25 are not released as of yet, right? So they're still under embargo, so we can't share them. But what we can do is we can talk about how we did. So last year, our three through six proficiency rates were typically about 15 to 20% above the country, the county's proficiency rates, which is much higher than the state. We expect similar results this year. You'll notice that there's a drop in the eighth grade proficiency level from last year to this year. Even in this percentage, we still average 10% higher in the county on the percentage of students answering questions correctly. But there's a reason. And of course, we have our eyes on our children. The eighth grade pool was very limited, and there, it only had 36 students, largely because of our acceleration program and also the opt-outs, which is highest in eighth grade. So naturally, of course, Ms. Talarini and the entire math team dug into the list for those 11 students who needed additional support, nine of whom are still here. And each one of them had a very strong story that had to do with challenges, whether it was that they are in special education services, new to the language, or new to the school. So again, this is one of the unintended outliers, right, consequences for the acceleration program as well. So, in terms of the math regions percentages, they're very impressive. In algebra, 71 students scored either a 99 or 100 on the algebra regions. 125 students scored a 95 or higher. There were 302 test takers, which is the largest number we've seen since 303 students in 217. On the 2024 algebra regions, Manhasset had the highest mastery percentage in the county, 77% for the district and 98% for our middle school cohort, with the county coming in at 32%. And this year, we expect similar results. In geometry, 138, 55% of the students scored a 90 or higher on the geometry regions. In the 2024 geometry regions, our district had the second highest mastery percentage in the county at 67% of our middle school population, I'm sorry, 67%. And our middle school population for geometry was 100%. It's kind of crazy. The county as a whole had 26% mastery, and the state had 16. We expect similar results this year. In algebra II, 115 students, 52% of the students scored 90 or higher on the algebra II regions, our algebra II mastery regions for 2025 is shown at 68%. In 2024, for comparison, the county's mastery percentage was 31%, and the state was 19. Algebra I, the regions was new in 2024 with the Next Generation Learning Standards. And geometry is new in 2025. Our student teams and Ms. Talarini were on top of those changes in terms of collegial circles, professional development, rewriting curriculum. They are very, very tuned into all of these shifts. Additionally, they also pay very close attention to the way the rubrics were written by the states. There's very little wiggle room when grading, so they are careful to point out these nuances to their students. These are the differences that make 99s and 100s possible. In terms of NWEA math, we continue to maintain and grow our NWEA RIT scores across the K through six levels. Teachers are differentiating their work in the classroom, providing students with enriching tasks with expanding efforts this year overseen by our elementary math coach, new this year. Additionally, last year, our elementary math specialists added in skill groups, which were really strong, which were fluid across the three through six grades, enabling us to assist students who may need a boost or review on a specific topic or concept. We move to science. The opportunity to excel in science are many, and this photo reflects just one at last year's March Malloy University-sponsored Cathy Belton Science Fair, where 10th grade science research students presented projects. So when we're looking at New York State Science Assessment, you may have read about this or heard about the shift in the Next Generation Standards. This was a big jump in terms of the state exams. So you'll notice on this is that the state last year had a proficiency rate for 23, 24 of about 45%. We are significantly higher. We anticipate the same in this year as well at the 71. Mr. O'Connell and his team have reviewed curriculum, they have done a deep dive, bless you, in their data. They have been creating universal assessments, and he has been doing an extraordinary job to support and enrich this as, as, as a whole. His science regions results are huge, both in terms of competency and mastery in the sciences. I would point out the, the changes and the increases that he has made, particularly in the area of mastery. Chemistry knocked it out of the park last year, and that's a very hard course. We're gonna move to humanities. Broadcast journalism students attended the May 2025 Long Island Broadcast Alliance for Senior High, where students earned four trophies of the five categories entered in a field of over 50 Long Island, Westchester, and New York City schools. So, in terms of the New York State Language Arts assessments on here, we're proud of the significant growth in third, fifth, and an upward trend for eighth grade. Fourth and seventh grade are both still extremely high when compared to the mean and county average, but a deep dive into the exam, coupled with grade level meetings, rigorous assessments, and targeted in this structure, identified areas for improvement. So, one of the things that we need to point out, and this is, again, we want to thank Ms. Alapurti, the entire IT team, the buildings and all the work that they did, we went completely computer-based testing this for three through eight last year. In the midst of all of this, at the beginning, I'm sure you read about this in the paper, there was a statewide disruption with the platform. It had nothing to do with us. Our people, you know, responded and did a fabulous job of getting it on time, but I was literally holding my breath about the results because I was concerned about this. So this was the first year that they were one to one within this piece. The other piece that we wanted to point out is grade seven and eight have high refusal rates, six out of 26, and then eighth grade, 126 out of 253 opted out of eighth grade this year. So, one of the things that I want to say, Mr. McGowan and the team have done a really nice job, is that the seventh and eighth grade schedule, and again, this has to do with building as well, with Dr. Coleman, now allows for more meeting time at secondary school for seventh and eighth grade to discuss and strategize. He's instituted uniform benchmarks using IXL, Common Unit Assessments, midterms, final exams, and he is doing another deep dive in terms of the data with the team and has started out the year very strong in that area as well. He is building on foundational strengths in a way that is really fantastic. So, we continue to grow in for NWEA ELA RIT scores. NWEA compares us to schools who are similar at similar growths and are similar demographic and academic achievement with this. We're growing the way we're supposed to be. The trajectory consistently registers above the norms that's indicated by the green line, but we want to grow stronger. So again, Mr. McGowan and the team have brought in a highly successful phonics program, foundations in second grade, use of jump rope readers for high interest, which is a series that is decodables, for supporting, for decodable readers in high interest fiction and nonfiction books that gradually and systematically introduce, introduce beginning readers to letter sound correspondence. To in further enhance grades three through six, they have an adaptive online program. IXL is being used as well to help students practice. And this year, third grade is bringing a uniform spelling instruction and assessment resource, Spectrum Spelling, along with a scheduled rollout of an engaging and research-based vocabulary instruction program called WordLove. He's done a lot of great work with our coach, right, Mrs. McNally. We're also rounding this out with a grammar workbook with a focus on grade three towards similar steps moving forward as students go into the higher grades. So, this is, this is pure Mrs. Ronai, all right? And the glows for social studies. Social studies was the first discipline to take the newly formatted Next Gen Regions exams. Our test scores show consistent excellence on the new global and US regions. Each year to earn a 99% passing rate is quite impressive, and our mastery rate continues to grow. In terms of grows, is they're working very hard on the regions exam writing portion of the test, and they're using the data for six through 11 to enhance student writing. She's done some really nice work on spiraling that up. In English, the glows are 99% passing, 85% mastery, with students with disabilities and ENL included. The grows on this one, there was a slight drop in mastery, but they have also done a deep dive within that. Something to know, and this is one of the things about state assessments, and this is why we're really careful with them, is that last year, to get a six out of six on, on the argument essay, there was an extremely high threshold, which kept some of our kids from that edge and dropped our mastery rate somewhat. This shift from Common Core to the Next Gen has been, has been upping the game a little bit each year. He's been doing a lot of work with the team to include modeling of mastery expectations in written responses and also creating success criteria. And now we're at world languages. This one, 24 of our students won National Language Proficiency Exam medals, which is a huge deal, and is another area where students excel and prepare for the global community. So, Flax A is in eighth grade, Flax B is in 10th grade, and we're very proud of the fact that we're consistent with the checkpoint B level exams. The Italian program continues to grow. This year, we have three seventh grade class exams. Last year in 24, 25, there were two classes, a total of 34 students took the Flax B exam, and this is an increase from 22 in the 22, 24. As we grow into it, there is a slight adjustment on our data. But the thing that's really wonderful, and I have to say that Mrs. Lang does beautifully, is that she has been adjusting and working on developing item, working with the area on item writing workshops. She's been doing a lot of coaching for the department as well, and also the curriculum development within the teachers. How's my pace? All right, good. What do you mean, what happened in Spanish? You have the most that take Spanish, though. That's your, that's your biggest cohort, which is, she has very impressive results, which is, that's a, that's a strong work all around for everyone. So let's go now to the Advanced Placement Summary. You ready there? Here you go.
Good evening. Our AP program is not only growing, but thriving as well. Our AP program continues to deliver rigorous academic experiences for students who pursue advanced coursework. These students demonstrate exceptional achievement and readiness for college-level expectations. In 2025, the 2025 academic year marked significant gains in both participation and high achievement, suggesting effective instructional practices and student preparedness. It should be noted that all AP exams, with the exception of world language, were delivered digitally for the first time in 2025, and College Board only gave us less than 10 months notice for this. In-house, and we moved it in-house as well.
Yeah, I'll just mention that there's strong research behind the fact that when schools move to online-only testing, those numbers usually dip, and that did not happen here.
Correct.
And it's pretty remarkable. 2020, looking at the number of exams and the number of, the percentage of students with three or higher, and look at that growth by 2025, and you still raise the bar, you still raise the results up to 95%. That's really remarkable.
I can give you specific numbers on that. So as Dr. Pelletieri pointed out, the percentage of AP students scoring three or higher remains consistently strong, improving from 91% in 2024 to a high of 95% in 2025, the highest achievement rate in Manhasset's AP program since 2010. The number of exams scoring three plus rose from 1,523 in 2024 to 1,761 in 2025, which is a percentage increase from 85% to 92%, indicating both higher participation and improved outcomes. Now, again, as you just stated, the number of AP exams scoring five increased from 491 to 683, an increase from 27% to 36%. The number of students who scored five, five on an AP exam increased from 265 in 2024 to 332 in 2025. It should be noted that when there's an increase in exams, the data takes on average two to three years to correct itself as students adjust to the advanced coursework across multiple disciplines. Therefore, Manhasset's results diverged positively across broader patterns. AP participation between 2024 and 2025, the number of AP exams administered increased by 7.3%, reflecting continued student engagement and program growth. The number of AP students went from 622 to 687 in 2025, which is a 10.4% increase. I also want to take a moment to highlight our students with disabilities participation in the AP exams. We saw a significant increase in participation in 2025. The number of SWD students taking AP exams increased from 75 in 2024 to 102 in 2025, which is a 36% increase. The number of AP exams for the SWD population increased from 158 in 2024 to 224 in 2025, which is a 42% increase.
It just underscores, Mrs. Lang says, kids can do things, right? So let's move into, please, graduation data. It's pretty self-apparent, we do really well. 98% of our students go to college, which is really wonderful in 2025, which is a testament to a lot of hard work for our children, teachers, families. In terms of the Advanced Regions Diploma, in case you're unaware of that, to earn an Advanced Regions Diploma, you have to pass nine regions exams, and you have to have a 65 or more on them. You have to pass ELA, one social studies, either US or global, and you have to have a 65 on Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. In science, you have to have living environment and one other lab, which is either earth science or chemistry or physics. You have to pass one LOT, right, world language, you have to, for checkpoint B, and then another optional, any other regions or a state-approved score. So that we have 89% that we're moving back up again to where we are typically with more participation is a great thing. So, we end with a photo of the Shelter Rock and Muncie Park Hackathon team entering the competition with some serious swagger. As Manhasset had a winning team last year, we have the privilege of hosting this year's Hackathon on Friday, Friday, April 24th, and we hope the board is able to come. As we shared at the beginning of the presentation, our student growth and achievement are demonstrated far beyond simple test scores. far beyond simple test scores. And I'd like to thank the leadership present, and the faculty, and the staff who create conditions for our students to thrive every day, and who are constantly seeking to strengthen and improve our students' experiences and outcomes. At this time, does the Board have any questions for us?
Thank you, Dr. Chowsky. I'll turn it over to the Board for any questions or comments.
First, I'd like to extend my great appreciation. I mean, this really speaks volumes to the staff, and honestly, the students. You know, I remember maybe a little while ago being a student, and it takes focus. And I can only imagine next year, with the focus of not having cell phones, I'm expecting those numbers to be even higher. But in all seriousness, this is amazing data and information. My general question, because it seems like our kids do well when they're challenged, all of our kids, even our kids with special needs. So it's more of a philosophical hypothetical question, where do we see kind of the next horizon of this? I think it's often sort of, everyone's like, ooh, AP classes, but then I hear different things like, well, some colleges don't even recognize AP, and sort of, is it a rite of passage? Just more generally, what would you advise the Board of what we should be thinking of for the next horizon? Because like I said, our kids can achieve great things, and that's amazing, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of what they can achieve. But what else, are there thoughts that you could offer?
So I think one of the things that we want to keep in mind is that we're having those discussions all the time. And one of the things that Manhasset offers, which is incredible and beautiful, is we have a lot of supports. We have labs, we have X-classes, we have support so students can challenge themselves in addition. I look forward to the next discussion when we're talking about another possibility for challenging ourselves as well. And then I think the other component is that we, secondary, this is a leadership conversation about where do we need to go next for opening up a little bit more for students for opportunities as well. Keep in mind, colleges look for students, and they're not looking for AP per se, they're looking for students who take the most rigorous program available to them, you know?
If I could add to that, can you, do you have the ability to go back in there? Would you go to the students with disabilities side? That really jumped out at me this evening as we reviewed this and looked at those increases. This speaks volumes to our staff who make kids feel comfortable, and the parents, right, who said, "Take this on. We have some challenges, but we're going to take on even more challenges." I'd love to see continued growth in this area. This is exceptional to me. And to echo Dr. Chowsky's remarks in terms of opportunity, just giving as many opportunities to as many kids as early as possible, I think is key for us, and it's an area where we can grow.
One last quick question, because I think it's great in terms of students that decide that college is for them, but I have to ask the 2%, sort of, how are we also fostering? I mean, there's so many great opportunities for trade school. I think we've talked about Bozies. So any comment there in terms of those that decide college is not for them?
So we have students that go into the military. We have students that go into trade as well, and then also through the Bozies program that they have that additional support. We're coming into, with the Blue Ribbon Commission, we're going to be looking at also pathways within that to support students. So in terms of, not necessarily college per se, but also those additional support for CTE.
Yeah, I think it's incumbent upon us to recognize that we give every, 100% of the students, if they choose to take on that opportunity for college, that we give them the opportunity to do that. And they may make a personal decision in their family to run a family business, join the armed forces like grandpa and dad did before them, any of those things. But we want to make sure that we are able to allow every family to make that decision themselves, and that we don't make it for them. We don't make it for them.
Anything else from the Board? Yeah, we'll just, we'll open it up to public discussion. But thank you, Dr. Chowsky. Thank you for the whole team for coming. It's an incredible achievement. It is, yeah, it's a testament to everything we're doing every day, and keep it up. Thank you. Now, we will, so after this session, we do have a public comment available, if anyone would like to say anything or share. Yeah, please, if you could, you could come up and just, it's okay, just come up, introduce yourselves, tell us your name, and so we can...
So the SWD, does it represent, stands for students with, I'm just curious, because I feel the number is a little bit high, students with disability. Is that, just out of curiosity, like, the students with disability, like, this number looks high to me. I feel just curious, not a professional question.
Sure. I'm going to give this to Mrs. Peterson. She is our Executive Director for Pupil Services. Thank you.
Hi. The district supports approximately 400-plus students. That includes students in our non-public schools, so 360 to 80 students within our district who have a disability and who have services to provide them with an appropriate education, some of them within our district, some of them outside of our district, but giving them the appropriate support so that they too can excel in whatever areas they can. Clearly, we have a lot of smart kids who have some weaknesses but are able to really do beautifully in their classes.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else? Okay, if nothing further, thank you very much, folks, and we'll move on to our next presentation or discussion, Math and Science Acceleration Programs.
Thank you very much again. Dr. Chowsky is going to lead us in this one, updated entrance criteria for Math and Science Acceleration Program. This is a culmination of probably a couple of years' worth of work, Dr. Chowsky. I want to thank you and the team here tonight, and others who are not here currently, but I know you've had meetings, countless meetings, even since I've been here, which is only a couple of months, meetings with parents, meetings with staff, meetings with me. You've done a lot of legwork on this with the team, and I appreciate that, and this is a culmination of those efforts over the past two years, year and a half, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We prepared visuals tonight typically for a discussion. We would not, but we did because we wanted to be very transparent and clear with everyone, as well as, please know that this will be posted on the district website tomorrow. Grades five and six will receive this information. In addition, they will also, the families will receive the parent letter and also the updated FAQs as well for this. So, to your point, the review lends what we had done. We did a tremendous amount of listening and also data review, and there were three key areas that we really focused on to balance this. The first one was identifying students' current skills. The second part was, it was very important to the public and also to our students when we spoke to them in upper grades, to maintain the program's rigor. And also, we wanted to recognize student aspirations, and that students don't necessarily grow all at the same time in the same way. We also, before I move on, I wanted to say, I wanted to thank the public and the staff for their feedback, their data analysis, for reaching out, for speaking. We came to an understanding that I believe is really helpful. First and foremost, we have made a commitment to transparency and consistency, so we wanted to post this very clearly. The criteria is being published as of tonight publicly, and then tomorrow we will be sending this out. We wanted to do this before the first NWEA administration, which will be on Monday. That's when that window opens. There will be no mid-year adjustments. The cut scores will remain fixed for the year. Secondly, we want it to be transparent in, third, sorry, transparent notification. Acceptance letters will be released with the final report cards. Exam scores will be included on those letters. Secure exam results will be provided with the notification letters. There will be multiple access points. Students may access, enter double-accelerated math in grade six or in grade seven. The science entry point is still at grade seven. Any prior additional entry points in high school remain the same. So what does that mean? In terms of the double-accelerated eligibility requirements, like this year, any student who is in grade six or grade five may sit for the exam, the qualifying exam. In grade six, the secure exam, the minimum is 65 out of 100. That's what it was this year. The measure, its purpose is to measure students' ability to apply Grade VI New York State Next Generation Math Standards. We are using NWEA MAP. We talked about that last year, and we're using the average of the three grade five administrations, only the achievement score, only the achievement score. And so if someone has, prefers a computer over paper, or paper over computer, they still have, they are still able to use that. In grade seven, we've added an extra access point. The secure exam, again, the minimum will be 65 in grade seven and eight math standards. It will measure students' abilities to apply Grade VII and VIII New York State Next Generation Math Standards. In the MAP score, again, it will be the average of the three grade VI administrations' achievement scores only. Any single acceleration requirements will remain the same. So in math, if a student, the students in sixth grade receive a teacher recommendation regarding their math placement in middle school, that will remain the same. However, if students and families wish to challenge themselves in seventh grade and go into single acceleration, all they need to do, as they have in the past, is contact Ms. Tellerini, have the conversation, and then they will be added to that class in middle school. So, what will this mean? You'll notice that we have a sliding score. If on the secure exam, a student earns between a 65 and a 74, they must have a 95 or above on NWEA for the average of those scores. This is in grade five or six. If they have a 75 to 84 on the secure exam, they must have equal or to a 90, and then an 85 or 100, they must have an 85 average equal to an 85 or to 90 of, on the achievement So let's go to the AP Intensive Science. There are very little changes, but again, we want it to be transparent and publish this ahead. In the eligibility requirement, again, students must earn a minimum of 16 out of 20 points to qualify for admission. The rubric is divided into three components. There is a secure exam, which is 0 to 10 points, and I'll show you that breakdown in just a minute, from 0 to 100 and converted to a 0 to 10 scale. It's an emphasis on the application of science concepts rather than recall. All of the formulas or information necessary is on the exam. There's embedded grade VI math standard skills that are included, and as it says on here, all formulas are provided. Let us be clear that math and science will remain decoupled for acceleration. Part two is lab and test averages, which are 0 to 5. Each trimester's lab and test averages are combined and converted into a 0 to 5 to ensure students demonstrate both practical and academic mastery. And then there's a trimester exam, which is administered at the end of trimesters one, two, and three. It's the same one for both buildings to make sure that we are having exactly the same curriculum and experience, and so students are prepared equally for middle school, and that's on a 0 to 5 scale. So what does that look like? The trimester exams is the same scale that's used already and has been announced by the teachers during open school. The secure exam, you'll notice on here within, with each piece, I'm just going to let you sit with that for a moment. Okay. So, in terms of parent and guardian notification, parents and guardians will receive this information via email and text tomorrow at 9:26. Additionally, one of the things we wanted to point out is there had been some questions regarding access to information ahead, you know, if they're interested. iXL offers opportunities to go, and you can do this now, to look at the grade ahead and have that kind of practice for state standards. You are welcome to use that information as well. We encourage for math that you join Mathletes, because that's a great place to practice these ideas and that application additionally. The updated FAQs, the slides, the parent letter, everything will be posted on the website So, questions from the Board?
Thank you, Dr. Chowsky, and thank you to the team for thinking through this. Can you share a little bit more, I mean, thank you for the transparency on the conversion on the scores, so maybe just for science. What's the logic for the conversion? Do we know that? Is this standard practice? Did we do this this year?
The conversion of the scores was actually done prior to when I got here, and that seemed to be the process that was used. So I basically kept that process for continuity, let's say, although we have made changes in the process to get into the program, but it's more for continuity. Maybe parents had older children or younger children that took the test, and then to suddenly switch to a percentage. And it also kind of evens out of, I guess, basically, the range of scores. One question could mean the difference between a five and a four, so you have a wider range with the percentage as well.
That's helpful for continuity for...
Also, it has to do with the sliding scale. We were trying to put those in place to make sure that we didn't want students, if they had, to Mr. O'Connell's point, if you get one question wrong, and then you were out.
And similarly, for, if we work backwards, for grade five and six double-accelerated math, the way that the NWEA break down in terms of those cut points, any insight into why those particular cut points?
I really want to compliment Ms. Tellerini, and this is a lot of data work that we had been doing, and this is four cohorts' worth of analysis. Within that, the students who are most successful through the entire program throughout tend to score around 95, but there are students within that range, 85 and above. So what we're doing is, is we're giving students multiple opportunities to find their way into the program.
I think one of the positives of this approach is it removes that, you know, I had a bad day, and one bad day that can impact me for the next five to six years in my high school career. So I think that's really important, and I appreciate that work, and the validity and reliability studies beyond, behind the NWA are top-notch, and so I know you're working with something here that is going to be really what we're looking at to do to be concrete in our final decisions.
Thank you for explaining all of the hard work that went into representing with these numbers. And Mariana, thank you for those questions, because it helps us understand all of the hard work and just the analysis that went into putting together these rubrics and making them transparent and having the data come out simultaneously with the report cards, and just having parents and children understand their placement in the process. From a Board's lens, what can we do to support the students that fall right below these benchmarks? And in terms of helping those students, because there will always be children that just don't get in, right? So we, what can we do from our lens? So we, what can we do from our lens to help support those students to get in?
So we.
Of supports?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, because that is a great question and I appreciate that. So a couple of things right now. By putting in place our, our math coach this year, we have already taken some real active steps. Any students who are right on the edge, we have identified and the, and the math coach is working with the teachers to make sure that those students have additional enrichment and support within the classroom. In addition, parents who have contacted us, either Ms. Tellerini or myself, or had the conversation that the student is someone that they really think that has an opportunity or can grow later on and would like an opportunity later on to try again in sixth grade, those students have been identified as well. What we've encouraged parents to do and guardians to do, and of course, when students are in secondary, we encourage them to speak up for themselves too, you know, for self advocacy, is to contact the teacher and say, my, we'd really like your child to have that additional support for that. Move towards the acceleration if that's where you want to go.
And a quick follow up to that for, that's a great reminder about the math coach. Is that a share, is that a shared math coach between the schools? Is that enough support? Because I think that, that is really an empowering kind of, perhaps for students to know that they're there, that we're there to support them, right? From a school perspective, if they just sort of didn't make the cut, there's now another opportunity for them to kind of go in. But is there enough support with the math?
So ideally, you know, ideally, it would be great to have one at each building, but we also have the math specialists as well.
It is shared.
It is shared at this point, similar to the literacy coach. It's always better when you have someone who is right there on the spot and on demand for that. That is a much better structure. But we're grateful for what we have right now. And I have to say that Mrs. Papadopoulos is, because I've been privy to the work that she's been doing and building over the summer. She has been, he has been working incredibly hard to get things ready for teachers and support on, on, on the enrichment and sending students. It's really neat. I will send some photos so we can post those as well on social media. But watching students with furrowed brows really working on math is pretty cool, so.
Thank you. And in terms of science, how do we do the same and support students that are, are right there and just need that extra enrichment for science?
So right now, they have a really strong identification program. We get less feedback in terms of students who are right on that edge. Keep in mind for science too, is that Mr. O'Connell started off right away by developing eight pathways, right? Eight onramps to get into acceleration. He is also has started shifting the culture in terms of supporting students who, if they want to try and they want to do this work, he finds a way to get them in for that challenging and working with his teachers. So this is, you know, I think what we're doing is we're, we're changing culture and thinking. Again, going back to that triangle that we talked about with student aspirations, is that it may not be right now that you have those skills necessary, but we'll find a way to support you and get you to that point.
Thank you. And, and again, in, in me sharing this, it's not every student, we, we want to support all of our students. We also don't want to place them somewhere where they feel pressure and have this, be in a situation where it negatively impacts their mental health and they're somewhere where it is requiring a teacher to just be in a place where a student just, it's their way, they don't have the foundational skills to be in that place. And so I'm hoping that my comments are not coming from a place where it's placing a child where they won't be successful. But it's, they're more so, how can the board be in a position where, when we're constructing our budget, we're mindful of how can we put our resources in a place where we could support you to be able to support the students that are just there and just need that extra support to be in the program that they belong in?
I think we have, we have the coaching model, which is really powerful. And it's had, it contributed mightily to what you saw in the first presentation regarding to our data within that. So these are all possibilities that we could talk about, you know, with Ms. Maggi Como, Dr. Pelletieri later on, when we get closer to budget time. But coaching model really works.
And one more reminder, if I remember, and because you triggered budget time, is that you are still pushing in enrichment in fifth, fourth and fifth, or we went down to fifth?
So we're doing fifth and sixth grade. They're reworking enrichment to make it much more enrichment, enriching, and also more challenging within that. But the plan is, again, it would be helpful to have another coach. The plan is, is we're going to be working down and, and we're going to get to kindergarten.
That was exactly my question. So the plan is to work down towards kindergarten?
Yep.
How quickly, okay. No, no pressures.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, yeah, thank you, Dr. Chowski. I mean, there's lots of opinions on how these programs are administered. But I think as a board, we feel these are important. We want to have rigorous academic pathways for our students. We want to challenge our students, so we're supportive of these programs. We want to have objective criteria, which I think we now have. And we have onramps. So we, we've tried to make sure that students who may learn at a slightly different pace or show promise later have an ability to enter these programs. And by the way, you don't, you can go all the way in math in Manhasset if you don't get into these programs in sixth grade. So like, my daughter is going to go all the way, but no. So, so thank you. And I think it's a very good, a very good representation of what we can do when we listen and think and then execute a, a plan. So I hope that is what happens here. So now there may be people who want to ask questions about, so we're open for public comment. Please come up and introduce yourself, say your name. And sure, yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sanaz Armstrong. I have three children in Manhasset. My eldest is in fifth grade. I just want to clarify, the Mathletes you're referring to is the early morning programs that is being offered at the schools. Am I correct in that? And the IXL program that you had referenced, that is an online platform that parents can use independently? Great. There was a slide talking about the secure exam that is being given. Is that being given to the fifth graders as well? And do we know when that's being given?
So last year, we gave the exam in May. And that would be publicized as well to people. So fifth grade will have a different secure exam than sixth grade appropriately for that. And those will be announced and we'll ma- make sure that that is, that information is given early and often.
And that's going to be an online exam as well?
No, it'll be paper based.
Paper based?
Yes.
Okay. And in that, in conjunction with, for the fifth grade, in conjunction with the average of the three NWA exams is the marker you're looking for for entrance?
Yes.
Is there a process for identifying students that are in fifth grade that are ready for it now? Or moving forward for testing or examination?
I would have the conversation with your teacher.
Okay.
And then also, the teacher can also work with any of the math specialists or the math coach, who can give you a very clear picture regarding this component. But again, any student who wishes can sit for that secure exam.
Right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yeah, please come on up and introduce yourself.
Hello? Hi, I'm Helena Say. I have two children, one in eighth grade and one in fifth grade. Just a clarifying question. I don't, the slides went by so quickly. And I know there was a ton of work. But when we talk about the secure exam, I think you mentioned content covering sixth grade material. Will there be additional topics outside of mathematics? Whether it's coding or logic or anything else?
No, it, it's mathematics purely, but it's application of the sixth grade standards to ensure that students are ready to skip that grade's content.
Perfect. And then, sorry, if you, would bear with me, one more question. You gave a lot of this year versus last year's stats in the earlier section. For this, can you just clarify what this year's stats are for the accelerated program? Like how many students are in there? I know they took a secure test too. What was that average? And how does that compare versus other years or the year before? Thank you so much. This is a great presentation.
Thank you for the question. So some of the details I'll have to connect with you offline about because I don't have them committed to memory. But we have about thirty-four students in this year's cohort. So I can again get you, provide you with a little bit of a history of the cohort sizes over the past, over the past few years and break that down kind of by building and such.
So is it thirty-four total or thirty-four per school?
About thirty-four total. At least.
That's probably less than.
There have been some years that have been greater. We fluctuated, so I can provide you with a little bit of a look back for that. But it's not completely out of the realm of, of normal.
We also want to underscore that by committing to those cut scores now, the cohort's going to be the cohort. You know, it may be bigger, it may be smaller, but we are, we are not committing to twenty students for each class. We're saying that whomever is ready and qualified, bring them on. We'll take them all.
You'd like to come up just, just for the microphone for the people at home? That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Again, I'm Jen Fang Liu. I have a fifth grade and an eighth grade, Shattarok. Just now you mentioned the secure exam is paper. And are they open questions or multiple choice?
It's mixed, but it's a mix of multiple choice and otherwise. But the reason why it's so important for paper, because Ms. Tellerini and I reviewed a bunch of exams this year, is because it shows students' work and thinking. You know, so there is, there is partial credit available on the secure exam.
How about the bad handwriting? Because this is something I think I should work, work on. My son needs to work on.
I understand what you're saying, but we are, we are, we would love your son to be, have beautiful handwriting. Thank you to continue that work. However, we are very good at translating students' handwriting.
Thank you. And can I have another question about the Mathletes? I just emailed a Mr., I forgot the last, Mr. Zero? Yeah. Is he a math leader teacher for fifth and sixth grade? Because I heard it's going to meet on every Tuesday. But for fifth grader band, they need to meet on Tuesday and Wednesday. And this, I think it's mandatory. So it seems he may have to choose either band or math leader meetings. I'm just.
So you know what I'd love to do is I would love to connect with you offline and see what we can do to support you. All right, thanks. Yeah, and other parents who might have the same issue, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else for the public discussion? Come on up.
Hi, it's Jennifer Herbert. I have two daughters, one at Bunsey and one in the middle school. So first, thank you so much for this presentation. This was incredibly transparent unlike I've ever seen, so I'm grateful for that. I did have a question. And it's based on a concern about whether the selection for math is now going to be based on content above grade level. So both of the metrics that we're using, whether we're using the secure exam or the NWA over multiple time points are basically content tests. So the secure exam we're stating is purposely a grade above their level, which is essentially forcing students to go out and get tutors or somehow to learn this outside the classroom. And the NWA is a similar content test. So at some point, whether it's the eighty-five percent or the ninety or the ninety-five, I would presume that that means that that's also students that are above grade level, that are somehow getting into those super high percentiles. It's, many students here can do it. But just, I've been a parent here for a long time. I've been here about twenty years. And I had a daughter who went through the advanced math program, who's now in college. And back at that time, we only tested on content taught in the classroom. So somehow we've abandoned that since 2020. And I'm concerned because it's forcing a culture of tutoring. And it's not, well, it's creating a lot of pressure, obviously. It's great that there's more data points, but they're really all content based and they're all going to assume that students somehow got ahead of their grade level, which of course is only by parents taking them to tutors and teaching them what absolute value means. So, or things like that. So I just, I would, I would really encourage the district, the board, to consider whether we really want to keep testing students on material that they had to learn outside the classroom. Because there was a good twenty-year period before 2020 when we didn't use those criteria. We used an aptitude criteria and we used the existing material that they were taught in the classroom, unit tests and finals. So, so that's one of my main concerns. And I just hope we've really thought about whether that's the culture we want to create here.
So, so a couple of things that are interesting. As of September fifteenth, NWA updated their structure. They have new norms for 2025. And they've also adjusted their testing. So it is based on grade level, their grade level standards. So rather than go, in the past, you're a hundred percent right. And they used to go higher in terms of what was, you know, questions or topics that hadn't been taught before. Now what they've done is restructured it. We met with them today to confirm this, Ms. Ella Purdy and I. It goes much deeper. So that's one piece within that. The other piece in terms of the equity, and you're, you're right about, we were very sensitive and heard people clearly about the tutoring culture because that is a reality. And I want to acknowledge that piece. That's why we also made available with IXL. We, we encourage people to use the enrichment piece and work with a coach. We encourage people to do the, the Mathletes piece because we want to make it accessible to people that may not have that. But your point is well taken. I really appreciate that and we will certainly think about and consider that further. Because this is not the end of the line. We will look at data and we will look at that iterative process every year. Thank you.
One, one quick question or a follow up that prompted. Are you able to share? Because I think there's that balance, right? I think it goes to what Nadia was saying is we also want to put students in the best position for success. So in some ways, you have to test that to a degree. Are you able to share? Is a majority of the content on a secure exam? You addressed the NWA, but maybe the secure exam, is it fifty-fifty? Just to get a sense, and I think that might be the, a good level of transparency to sort of set expectations. Because there's a balance, right?
Absolutely. I also want to point out that in that earlier model that was referred to, that had led us in, in 2018 to do a real deep dive into adjusting it because we had about a fifty percent attrition rate when we were only assessing students on the fifth grade content as well as an aptitude score. So it did come with it some, some challenges that were felt that had impacts significantly on social emotional wellness for students as well. Kids don't get to get a do-over once they've skipped content. And that's something that's really important for us to note that whenever we are sanctioning or recommending that a student is to skip a grade level of content, that we are very, very careful with those recommendations. Also, if I might remind everyone that this was never created to be a pathway. It was something that was designed and put into place for just about two students one year, about, you know, probably eighteen years ago at this point. And it has taken on a life of its own. So it is certainly important to keep that in mind. So the exam, the secure exam, it does focus heavily on sixth grade content with some fifth grade content as well. That is vetted by the Association of Mass Supervisors of Long Island, which is my collegiate organization. And it is, absolutely the majority is sixth grade content because the students are by design of, of this pathway. They are skipping that grade. So we do want to make sure that they have, they have the wherewithal to do so. And we think that our sliding scale is flexible to acknowledge that we're not looking for, you know, perfect, perfect scores on those exams, but a certain degree of aptitude.
Thank you for the transparency on that.
Just one question, Dr. Chowski. Do you remember at the end of the year, we had the.
Do you remember at the end of the year, we had discussed extending the contract? I think it's for IXL, if I'm correct, during the summer months. Have we done that and opened it up for the district?
So within that, we had extended it, but will continue to do so. It's, right now, it's merely a button for the standards that we can, we can hit that. And people can go up to, actually, it's grade eight, which I would not recommend. There's no need for that. But this certainly, we have it.
I'm Chow. I, I have two kids. One is seventh grader, one is first grader. So I really appreciate everything we're doing here. And the fact we're discussing all these things back and forth means the whole district fundamentally care about these fundamentals for the students, and cares about how students can really excel. And what I want to talk about is, I want to ask about is, I hope, like, our district can also pay enough attention to some other aspects. In particular, I myself, from computer science major. So my daughter was in the double accelerated math, and, but she and her team, they were in the Hacks on, they were so excited, and we saw the pictures early on. But I feel like I, aside by the excitement, there's, there, I was hoping there could be some more effort or encouragement or support from the school in terms of learning computer science programming. There was questions early on, how, what's the next rising issue? But talking, we talk about AI, we talk everything. Of course, computer science should be part of it, right? So one particular example, my daughter entering seventh grade, she was excited about programming. I were, I want to know how to move forward. I saw a lot of advanced AP class and pathways for science, for math, but I don't know enough about computer science, right? How to do, learn programming if I want to foster the, the interest and hone her skills? How do we move forward? And I talk a lot with Ms. Melissie from the Shutter Rock. She's amazing. And they, they, they really engage with the students, encourage them, all of them. But one of the issue is for the Hacks on team, in the end, only eight students get in. And the rest students, next year, they're completely bombed out, because they try so hard, then they're out of the game. They are, they are trying to do this kind of second, second round competition to encourage all the students who are not selected to the team to compete against each other. But that's very limited. And they were talking about having club time. So it's like, like math late, but then there was some kind of limited hours they can offer per year. I feel like there, there should be more support on this important topic in my, partially my own background. But also, I think this goes hands-on hands with computer science, with math, with science, and in the future with research in high school. This is becoming very, more and more important in, if you go to a science competition, computational biology, computational science, and things are a very important topic, not only biology, chemistry, right? So, yeah, that's all I want to mention here.
Yep. Well, a point well-taken and well-noted, and I, I agree with you. So, you know, I think we have aspects like the robotics club, which has some relevancy to those things. But I think it's something the board can take up as we go through the year here. Thank you for that. All right, any other comments on this topic? Going once, going twice? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. And please let me excuse the administrative team here, so you can go home and see your families and get some rest. And, and hopefully, we will. Thank you. Move through the rest of this agenda. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So it's still fairly early in the year, but let's go through board discussion and committee reports in an expeditious fashion. So audit, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. And please, Catherine. I think you, if you want to stay, please, Catherine, if you want to go study and go, you know, you can do it, please. Okay. Okay, we're almost, we're almost done. Oh, okay. All right. So we'll move, we'll move through this. So, so audit committee, we have not met this year yet, which is fine. And we will do so at the next meeting. I'm not exactly sure when that date is, actually, but we will find that out. Same with finance. Looking forward to this exciting committee. And, and I do look forward to discussions specifically around transportation and, you know, doing some, some research on that topic. MAC.
We haven't met yet, but our date is October 15th.
October 15th. SCA.
Yes, we have here. The luncheon, the SCA luncheon is less than two weeks away. It's October 8th at North Hempstead Country Club. And we really, really, really would like to encourage ticket purchases and everyone to join. Also, the Islanders Spirit Event is on October 13th, and is open to the entire Manhasset community, students, families, and staff. We really appreciate it if you would remind everybody to buy the tickets. And also, join as a member to the SCA. It's very important. I think there's a discount if you have one family versus two, versus three members of your family. I'm not sure. I just paid my dues today. And make sure as board members, you all pay your dues. Thank you.
Quick update from Tower. As you mentioned earlier, thanking them for their continued donation to the school and support. Couple of quick reminders, they have a date set for the Dinner Dance, March 7th. Location to be confirmed. They also had an event tonight at Restoration Hardware was their grand opening. I know, and we were here. But those proceeds are to support all the mission and vision and the activities that Tower provides. There's also a luncheon on October 29th at Toku. They also donated tickets to the SCA luncheon for the Dinner Dance. So once again, thank you, Tower, for your continued support and, and your activities with the SCA as well.
Sounds like we have a lot of dinners, luncheons, hockey games. What could be better? So please, to all of you listening at home, I know there's many of you. Please participate. Okay, so next is PACE.
On October 7th, we have a very exciting ribbon cutting of our Life Skills Classroom from our bond. The classroom is finally finished. And we're very excited to have that. That's been in the works for four years. Yeah, very excited. And our special education department, Ms. Peterson, has been overseeing that with Dr. Pelletary, Stu Gorbelsky, and Dr. Jinda. And our PACE executive board has been overseeing that as well. And everybody, all of our staff, our teachers, students are very excited. So it's on October 7th.
CASA.
I got the CASA update. Connie Bruno and the CASA board have put together an ambitious fall of events and activities for all of our students and families. The first one, from October 14th through 16th, it's entitled "Strengthening Academic Success Through Study Skills." And that's going to be pushed into all the seventh grade transition classes. So they'll learn about note-taking skills, reading strategies, study habits, and it's a great way to help them adjust to the new expectations of middle school versus elementary school. On October 28th, as part of Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, there'll be a community presentation in the evening called "The Brain Under Siege: How Alcohol, Vaping, Marijuana, and Gaming Are Rewiring Our Teens' Brains." And it's going to be presented by an expert, Dr. Stephen Dewey, who's a research professor at the Department of Psychiatry in NYU School of Madison. So that's going to be in the evening on the 28th of October. Friday, November 7th, at 7:00 PM, is a fan favorite. The Harlem Wizards will be back in the high school gym. Tickets and sponsorships are on sale now. Everyone, it already went out via email to the whole community, so you guys can find in your emails to sign up. November 18th, this CASA's first Zoom of the parenting program for the year. From seven to eight over Zoom that day, it's recognizing and managing anxiety in youth. And finally, as we head to the end of November, this is for the class of 2026. It'll be happening in school. It's called Ready, Set, Go: Preparing for Life After High School. And that topic is alcohol and fentanyl awareness. So that's from Connie Bruno and her board of CASA. Lots going on for the fall.
Fantastic. EOC is the last one. Any update there?
Yes, we have one very exciting update from the EOC. Our former board chair, Steve Panzik, is leading a fundraiser. The weekend of October 10th, he is asking the community to raise money to help him run from Montauk to Times Square, in, in the spirit of raising money for our EOC. It is on the front page of the EOC website. I think it's MGNEOC.com. You guys can click right on the front page. Donate money for Steve Panzik to run for about three days straight. I think it's 140-something miles. So he's really showing his passion. It's a wonderful program, wonderful part of our community. So if you can't run with him, run 140 miles with Steve, please go online and help him, help him raise a lot of money for the EOC. That's the weekend of, starting October 10th.
Fantastic. Go, Steve. Okay, so anything else on the committees? I think we're, we're good. All right. Next is personnel. Dina, thank you for preparing this. I, I reviewed it. It seems largely business as usual. And some salary setting, and also, you know, other. Future EOC meeting? Do we know? Do we know the next one? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the, back to the personnel schedule. Any questions or anything from, from the board here? Anything, Dina, that you, you want to highlight?
Yeah, Dina, just a quick question on the mentor piece, I think, regarding, is that standard of practice?
So it is part of the MEA contract. So you'll see Schedule B, that's related to a contract. But in the future, we'll make sure we'll clear that up, so that it's clear that everyone knows it's from a contract.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the personnel schedule? Second? All in favor? All right, 5-0. All right, so let's move to the consent agenda. And I think we have a series of familiar items here. Special education service contracts, ratification of conference requests. I know some of our board members are going to be heading to conferences as well, which is exciting. Let's flip through this. Superintendent, interim superintendent to attend a conference. Thank you. Dr. Pelletary, excess of library books, approval of shared decision-making, appointment of other Citizens Advisory Committee members for audit. So that is Evan Bartel and Jennifer Herbert. Thank you for volunteering. And Nicole points out, we have one more opening available for audit. We have seven more for finance. So Maria, yourself and myself, we're not very popular, so we're going to have to go do some recruiting for our finance committee, which is a very important committee. MAC, the athletic committee, is full, which is great. Board of Registration, transportation plans. Let's see, Claims Report. Any questions specifically on any of these items? I'm sorry, James Lancelotti, too, for the MAC, for the MAC. So that is full. So that is good. Thank you, James. All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? All in favor? Great. Upcoming items of interest. So we have a board meeting on October 23rd. Ten Year Recognition in the Black Box Theater. That's one of the great meetings of, of the year. We will have our audited financial statements and reserves to review. And now, we are at public comment for this meeting. I don't see anyone here to comment publicly. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, you are. Thank you for being here. Please, the mic, the mic is yours. Okay. No comment. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. I also want to point out that we will go back into a brief executive session to discuss personnel matter after this meeting, so I want to make sure we are clear on that. But can I have a motion to adjourn the public session? Second? All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.